Okay.
Laura Reina always likes to see you.
I'll entertain, alright, so I'll open the meeting at six o'clock. Call the meeting's order. You've got the minutes from the last meeting?
I read them.
You read them? Okay, you don't have to have them, you guys said here. Any changes, additions, corrections? I'll entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the last meeting. I have a motion. A second?
Second.
All those in favor, oh, we don't have to, we'll call anymore. All those in favor say yes.
Yes.
Yes. Those who say no?
No.
Any questions on any of the items number three? If not, okay, we're all set.
Thank you, Mr. Massey, appreciate it. Call the Board of Selectmen to order just a very quick update for those at home.
Recording in progress.
Vice Chair Ridlak will not be here tonight to do a family conflict and select person singer actually had a death in the family. I will not be able to attend, so our thoughts and prayers are with him and the singer family. That being said, we are moving on very quickly before we have our discussion on the warrant. We just have a few appointments reservations and one other item. So, we have an appointment to the WRTA. TA goal is...
Alright, attach us a letter of interest from James R. Neese seeking appointment to the WRTA advisory committee as Charlton's representative. Our previous representative, Robert Howard, unfortunately passed away recently. I recommend the board make the appointment. The expiration date will be June 30th, 2022.
Any discussion? Hearing none, entertain a motion.
I'd make a motion to accept.
Second?
Second.
Discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, that's unanimous, welcome Jim, looking forward to working with you.
Yes.
Next up, per diem dispatcher.
Alright, Police Chief Dowd is asking the board to appoint Donald Le Yu as a per diem dispatcher. I'd recommend the board make the appointment.
Discussion?
No.
Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion.
I motion for, um, to recommend to appoint Donald Le Yu as a per diem dispatcher.
You have a second?
Second.
Discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, that's unanimous, thank you, Mr. Massey, last but not least.
Alright, in the past, only a student from Shepherd Hill was recommended to be appointed as the student select person to represent their school. Chairman Borowski asked us to reach out to Bay Pass to see if they would like to have a student representative from their school as well. I'm happy to say that Bay Pass has joined this endeavor and is recommending the appointment of Senior Isabella Tanaka as Bay Pass' first student representative. Ms. Tanaka will be attending the Board of Selectmen regular meetings and provide a report on items of interest at Bay Pass. I recommend the board make the appointment and her first meeting to attend will be October 26th.
Excellent, discussion? Hearing none, I'll...
I would make a motion to accept.
Excellent, second?
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion, further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, that's unanimous. Isabella, looking forward to working with you, happy to see Bay Pass.
Welcome, welcome and thank you for joining.
If it's all right with the board, let's go move over to something very quickly under other business, unknown kind of posting. This is very innocuous. Andrew, you want to talk about postcards?
Yeah, so your requests, President Chairman, we received calls to do a direct mailer as a reminder of the special town meeting. The, you know, basic postcard, just with the date, time, location, and a reminder to register to vote if you already haven't. The price came in at $2,400. We can take that money out of contractual obligations if you guys wish to proceed.
Thoughts from the board as well as our friends on FinCom. Basically, the idea is over the years, we've always heard, for right or wrong, that there's been an awareness issue at times and we did more than we've ever done last town meeting and we still had an epidemic, let's just call it, rounding 135 people. Thought being that this year, knowing there's so many important things on it, that we're going to send a singular postcard without any pro or con, with just a link to, uh, to the warrant and other, you know, things that can be put out there for town meeting. And again, we're talking about it'll be short change, I thought it'd be a nice test and learn for around 2,400. So, again, I welcome discussion from anyone or entertaining a motion either way.
I would, I would make a motion to, to accept.
I second.
I think it's, I think it could be, well, I mean, we can track it and look and see if it works. I, I believe it would.
Emotionally, you have a second? Discussion from anyone, including anyone on FinCom? Or anybody?
It'd be nice if there was some way you could get them to bring the card, just so you knew how effective it was.
I 100% agree. Yeah.
Oh, put a tear off into a raffle or something. Laura Reina, do a raffle.
We might be, we might be treading into some, um...
How about just a door price?
Laura Reina, are you good with a, with a, with us doing a postcard?
I would highly endorse a postcard, as long as it directs people to town resources. So, instead of going to outside resources for information, if it could go to the town website
Yeah, absolutely.
and to the, um, to the warrant on the website.
Yep, yeah.
You know, instead of Facebook or other agencies that might have an interest in the meeting.
Yeah, we wanted to keep it as impartial and objective as possible. That's why it literally is a, hey, don't, again, I'm paraphrasing, but don't forget to come town meeting on November 15th. Go to our town, Charlton website for information about the warrant.
And so perhaps it could include an announcement of a, you know, I've never been to town meeting before, how do I learn how to participate? Andrew and I spoke briefly today, just about one week in advance of the meeting, possibly holding a Zoom call with anybody who would like to find out, how do you, you know, why should I come to town meeting? And what should I know before I get there, so that I don't feel like I'm a fish out of water and the thing just rolls right over me? But when do I have a chance to speak and what does it all mean? And so maybe we could do a, just an open forum Zoom call for people to ask questions as a way of making sure we've covered all our bases.
That's awesome.
It is.
Cool. Alright, so we're in progress, we have a motion, we have a second, any further discussion?
No.
Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, that's unanimous. Andrew and staff, thank you for taking care of that so quickly. That being said, Mr. Massey, we are now back to, we're talking town warrant, articles of motions.
Well, yeah, first, first couple are from finance, or have to do with finance. So, you want to have just an open discussion on, alright, Article 1 is, okay? Anybody got any questions, alright? So, this is the one that's always first every year. Last year's this. Making sure we got it cleaned up from last year. Everybody can see the dollars involved? You want to, should we make a motion as we go on, on how we stand or...
It's probably easier that way.
Yeah. So, from the Finance Committee, everybody read Article 1. Any questions? I'll entertain a motion to approve Article 1 as presented.
Salute.
You have a second? A second? Any other discussion? All those in favor say yes.
Yes.
Opposed, say no. Alright, Finance Committee approves this motion.
Mr. Massey, same thing with the Board of Selectmen, please.
I would make a motion to accept this.
I second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, that's unanimous, one down. It's easier this way, because we only have 12 this year.
For you guys anyway. The next page at the top, just to, you know, balance the funds for appropriation, you'll notice that we're really bumping up the stabilization account. We're going to get it up to 7.2%, alright? And as Ashley has mentioned to a few people, okay, we did get dinged a little bit because we're not at our goal of 10%. So, the most we get, and Andrew, I'm thinking if we start that new stabilization, put us around 8.2. So, we're getting close, okay, to hitting our goal of 2%. So, that's just what that chart tells about.
Yes, nice, thank you for that.
Can you explain to the people at home what the benefits of getting to 10% are? I think we understand, but...
Yeah, 10%, when, you've got to remember the stabilization account, especially where we're starting a new capital stabilization, this really, this is our rainy day account. This is our savings account for that unexpected, out of the blue, black swan event that really throws a monkey wrench into what we've got, okay? We're going to try and use this, just like that, as emergency and Andrew's idea is to set up this new capital stabilization. That's where the trucks and the turnout gear and all the other stuff that the departments asked us for should come from, alright? It's going to take us a while to build that one up to, I mean, one fire truck, the chief likes his very big fire trucks, alright? One of those, worry about that account. But, that's what we're going to start to do, is just build up that. And, and as I mentioned, without saying, you know, the better our stabilization account balances versus town budget, the better it is for us when we go up and try and borrow money. We get better rates and higher ratings. So, that's, that's what the stabilization account is all about.
And for those that are wondering, as Mr. Massey mentioned, generally speaking, we're shooting for 10% of the annual budget. So, to your point, it's going to take a lot to get there, but we are actually in a better position than a lot of other towns, so...
And I think, I think one of the other benefits was, we have a double A bond rating right now and with 10%, we could get to triple A, which is the highest. And then our lowering, our interest rates on anything we borrow goes far. So, it's, it's a very conservative, wise move.
And as you said, Bill, we're ways away from where other towns are.
Absolutely, yes.
Other towns are nowhere close to us. Article 2 is the transfer within a department. They're short in one area and need to be funded in the next. So, this is a motion that just moves money from one, one budget line to another within the same department. And you go down, we have made a commitment to ourselves to always be funding our OPEEB account, which is our unfunded liability account for all of our retirees here in town. We've got a ways to go, I think, how many years was it?
20.
20, 20. At this rate, it'll take us 20 years to get caught up, okay? But, looking at the numbers, again, we're in a much better position than a lot of other towns that I've seen.
Yeah.
So, we're making good progress. 20 years may sound like a long time, but we'll get there.
Some other towns have a actuarial hope that they change the calculation, because that's the only way that they're ever going to do anything with it. We're actually, again, in a so much better position by actually doing this. So, again, I think this is, this is great that we continue to do this every year.
And then the, the other two items, moving some free cash for contract obligations and the sewer. So, I'll, from the Finance Committee, I'll entertain a motion that we approve Article 2.
Salute.
I have a motion.
Second.
I have a second. Any discussion? All those in favor say yes.
Yes.
Opposed, say no. That is unanimous. Finance Committee approves this motion.
Stand fresh, please.
I move to approve the motion.
You have a second?
Second.
Discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, that's unanimous. Thank you, on to Article 3.
Alright, Andrew, I'm going to ask you to grab this one. Alright, let's see. Sewer, within the sewer, and I'm not going with the sewer enterprise account.
Actually, Pete, what else? You're up.
Superintendent Borya, in the house.
So, the wastewater treatment plant is operated by Veolia Water North America and we're just finishing up with our initial five-year contract with them. So, we went out to bid this summer to renew that contract. We did an RFP, worked with Andrew to get through that process and unfortunately, we only had one proposal come in and that was from Veolia. And this increase of $100,000 is for their increase in their annual operating costs to operate the treatment plant. So, when they came in five years ago, they said they undervalued a couple of components and the price they came in at was $100,000 less than what the current operator was working at. So, we just received five years of a great rate and now, we're kind of, this is where we're at. Fortunately, Veolia does a great job operating the wastewater treatment plant, so other than the price being a little bit higher, it's, they're a great company to work with and they've done nothing but good things for the, for the town, for the water and sewer department, so... I'm at, we worked with Ashley to figure out how much we need to cover the additional contract for the remainder of FY '22. The new contract starts November 1st and approximately $100,000 will be able to cover that increase for the remaining seven months.
Okay, is this going to be another five-year contract when you renew with them?
It's an initial five-year contract with two five-year renewables. We changed the, the term a little bit to try and get us some more longevity, so we're not going out to bid if we don't want to every five years. The initial contract was a three-year term with two one-year renewables. And it's just, to get a company in like that, and again, to get longevity, we changed the term a little bit and we hope that would help us with the price a little bit, but, again, with the climate we're in today and with what companies are going through, it kind of didn't work out in our favor.
That's my move.
It's just, my only question is, are we, is, if it's $100,000, is that, that's just what we're appropriating? Their actual final bill could be 79, 995 or, or they, they're hard on that $100,000?
No, it's in, they have an actual fixed annual cost that's broken down monthly. So, this additional $100,000 covers the additional monthly fee for the remainder of FY '22. And then for our FY '23 budget, we're probably going to have to increase another 30%, unfortunately, to cover the other five months that we didn't have to increase this fiscal year.
And for those folks at home, and this, this really isn't discretionary. This is a, there's no one else that can do this, or at least that bid on it. So, someone has to do this and is, and is going to this. So, it's not like we're just putting money out there.
And I think it always, it's more cost-effective to go with somebody who knows the system already.
Sure, thank you very much, Peter. Alright, from the Finance Committee, I'll entertain a motion that we approve Article 3 as presented. I have a motion.
Second.
I have a second. Any discussion? All those in favor to say yes?
Yes.
Opposed, say no. Unanimous of this vote, Finance Committee approves.
Excellent, our team, please.
Can I make a motion, we accept?
You have a second?
I second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Yes.
Aye.
Opposed, that's unanimous. Next up is my favorite article.
Okay, Article 4, to establish a capital improvement stabilization fund separate from our, what's the other one called? Just a stabilization fund. So, this one is going to be dedicated to capital expenditures. Trucks, buildings, building repairs, all of that kind of stuff. It'll be, this, this establishes the fund and then later on, in another article is when we actually fund it, right? From the Finance Committee, I'll entertain a motion, we accept Article 4 as presented.
Salute.
I have a motion, we have a second, I have a second, any discussion? There being no discussion, all those in favor to say yes?
Yes.
Opposed, say no. That is unanimous, Finance Committee approves.
Excellent. Ashley, softball question to you, for those, for those watching at home, it takes a simple majority to move in, but it's a two-thirds to get it out, right? So, for those watching, when we put money in there, it's, it's a lot harder to get out than it is just a simple vote. So, that actually works in our favor, so that, again, town meeting voters have to vote by two-thirds there to actually move money out. So, to that point, it's, it's really a savings account for something big that we give them, so...
And not at our discretion, as you just pointed out.
Exactly.
Strictly their discretion.
Exactly, yeah.
That's a good call. You actually almost need to crack the piggy bank.
Yeah, like I said, this is, yeah, I, I love this, so...
Yeah, it's good.
Motion?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, that's unanimous, excellent. Number 5, here.
Article 5, you're the sponsor, so I'll let you pick it up.
Oh, okay. Alright, so, how do you want to do this, Andrew, because we have a bunch of...
Well, we do it as each motion, I think, most of the department heads are here that can address their individual requests, so...
Alright, Chief Knopf, you want to come up first for Station 1 improvements?
Do you want to just do all the fire ones while he's up here, because he's got a couple?
Well, I kind of like to see him get, you know, have to come up and down, but sure.
I like you, Ashley.
So, basically what this one is, is that we're looking to fund certain, certain line items, if you will, by using free cash and some other stuff. So, we're started with Chief Knopf's stuff, which at least starts with motion 1 and then Chief, you can help me out after that.
I think he's first and the last.
Yeah, I was going to say, it's, it's just those two.
First and last.
Chief, you up?
So, it's actually not improvements, it's actually repairs. Obviously, with the, with the vote of the new building down, there's stuff that needs to be done in the current buildings we're in. So, that's what this money is for. This is a phased approach, so there's more to come. But, if you, if you want, I have a listing, which I can provide, I'll give that, you might already have.
I think I have it, yeah.
Of all the projects that are slated for this, this funding and then moving on. So, that's what this is about.
I probably have it ready for town meeting, just, just in case anybody asks, but outside of that, I mean, I'm good. My only question for you is that, and it's, and I know it's going to, it's a dangerous question. Is this, is this enough to get you through for the next, uh...
Like I said, it's a phased approach.
I think this is just the windows, is it just the windows?
And I, I've got it ready here.
I think it was windows and then some...
So, within this $100,000, there's an oil tank that has to be replaced. There's a first floor bathroom that has to be renovated. There's window replacements around the building, gutter work and then some siding repair and replace, just those sorts of things.
Yeah, no, I just want to make sure that at least, even as part of a multi-generational plan, that this gives you a decent foundation to move forward with.
Yeah, and working with Andrew, you know, I kind of gave him, the next phase is a bigger project with the apparatus, bay floors and the actual, we call them the apron, which is the driveway of the buildings. Those are going to have to be ripped up and replaced at some point, so that's later on down the road.
And this is only Station 1, this has nothing to do with the issues of Station 2?
Well, and Station 2 is a different animal. I got a, I got a quote for Station 2 and the recommendation was to tear it down until it's something else.
That's the building in the center of town?
Yeah. Which is going to be a conversation we have to have real quick.
Yeah, we have nowhere else to put the apparatus to tear it down.
Which is also the central area that has mold issue.
Well, that's, maybe people don't know that, if you, if you want to elaborate a little bit on that. We saw some emails, I guess it's safe to elaborate on it, right?
Do you want to talk about that tonight?
Really briefly, just recently what's happening in...
I don't want to be the bearer of all bad news.
I'll tell you what, can you, can you give us the 30-second elevator speech?
Well, the 30-second elevator speech is, you know, after continuous rainfall, the building obviously does not drain well and receives water every time it rains and over time, that condensation develops into mold and mold has been found on the walls, in equipment, on the trucks, in the trucks. And so, the insurance company's been out and waiting on their estimate to come back and that's your elevator song.
Thanks, Chief. And for those at home, this is the thing that Chief Knopf spoke to us, was it two weeks ago, three weeks ago? Yeah, and then it came back. So, we're talking Station 2, which is the one by, by the post office and clearly, we need to, it sounds like that the recommendation at the end of the day is going to be just tear it down and start over.
Yes.
So, that's not for this, but that's another conversation that we have to have with, with the town real quick because, A, your folks need to be safe and B, we have to find a way to preserve that equipment. So, for the board, let's do these one at a time, so for, I'm sorry, Chief, I'm sorry, Chief.
Alright, from the Finance Committee, I'll entertain a motion 2, we accept motion 1 as presented. I have a motion, I have a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor to say yes?
Yes.
Opposed, say no. That's approved by the Finance.
Stand for our board, please.
Yeah, I, by all means, I entertain a motion to approve it, it's at least we can do.
Second?
Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, that's unanimous. Chief, let's go over to motion 9. That's page, that's page 6 in our stuff.
So, motion 9 is, again, a phased-in approach. Our turnout gear, which is, you know, all the big, all the stuff that we wear going into buildings and stuff, has a 10-year lifespan. We've got some that's coming due, so in, in order to get out in front of it, the plan is a five-year plan of $10,000 apiece to purchase four sets, maybe five sets of additional gear every year just to start replacing the older gear. Okay, and that's all that is.
I'm good on our side. Nick?
From the Finance Committee, I'll entertain a motion to accept, to accept motion 9 as presented.
Salute.
I have a motion, I have a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor to say yes?
Yes.
Yes, opposed, say no. Approved by the Finance Committee.
Steven Bajman?
I would make a motion to accept the appropriation of the turnout gear.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, that's unanimous. Chief Knopf, as always, thank you.
And Jen, you want to talk about Article 6, Laura Reina?
Talk about what?
Article 6.
That's his tanker.
Borrowing article.
Oh, Article 6.
Yeah.
Oh, Article, okay.
It's a borrowing article.
Alright, so we're looking still on page 6, Article 6, Chief?
Asking to replace, it's actually Tanker 2. But, Tanker 2 was a 96, which is over 25 years and the FPA standard is after 25 years, the vehicle should be decommissioned. It's still in service with a non-functioning pump. It's basically used to carry water to and from right now. It's inoperational otherwise. So, that's what the funds are for, is to replace that truck with a modern, up-to-date tanker.
How long does it take to get one of these?
Usually, especially with COVID now, we're looking at 12 to 18 months.
Oh, wow.
Where do we place, not in a multi garage, right?
Well, that's where the other one is right now.
And what happens to the one that you replaced?
It's either traded or bid off.
Typically, we, we'll get a trade-in value of maybe a couple of thousand dollars.
How does a tanker truck operate without a pump?
We are able...
You bring another pump with it?
No, we are able to offload water through a chute. It's a little bit of a chute, the water drains out and that's, that's essentially...
How do you get the, oh, you fill up the station?
We can still fill it and empty it, that's all we can do with it.
So, Chief, for those that don't, we basically have a 25-year-old truck that's end of life, that isn't operable, so we're looking to replace it. So, that's, so people are safe.
Chief, question on that 12 to 18 monthly time, is that 425K accurate due to COVID and supply chain issues?
That's the, that's the number we are using to inspect the truck and if it's enough, we're going to make a bid.
Okay. Finance Committee, I'll entertain a motion to approve Article 6 as accepted.
Salute.
I have a motion, I have a second, I have a second, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor to say yes?
Yes.
Opposed, say no. Approved by the Finance Committee.
Stand for our board.
I move to approve Article 6, replace the Tanker 1.
It's Tanker 2.
That'll be correct, that is why I'm...
I second that.
Any further discussion? The only thing I'd add is often, we, what we see in these or potentially borrow, we're not talking about, again, it's more for those at home. We're not talking to debt exclusion. We would find a way to borrow money and actually pay it from our budget, so this is not going above the, the levy limit. We, we will find the money for this, one way or another, so... That being said, any further discussion?
Where is Tanker 2 stored now, at, at Station 2?
Yes.
Can you, and, can you...
That's one of the trucks that hadn't hold that.
Okay, thanks. Any further questions? All those in favor?
Uh, yeah.
Opposed, I'm going to say that's unanimous. Thanks, Chief.
Thank you.
Alright, we're going back to page 4, motion 2. Chief Dowd, you're up.
What do you think?
There you go.
You just looking for your...
What do you want, 200?
So, put a request into 3 cruises, just so you know. Got a big project, we had a big project, a lot of times where the cars were needed. We've got a big project on Route 20 coming in, cars are usually the details. But, I've got to take them from somewhere, I've got to take them from patrol to put them up on details, contractually. Like, if I tell an officer to report someplace, I've got to provide them a car or pay mileage, nothing wrong. So, obviously, having cars is important to me. Whenever I don't need a car, I bring it back to the town, like Conservation is driving our last car. So, as soon as I'm able to free up cars, I do free them up. They're expensive. I realize they're expensive, I mean, they're always either getting a recall, repair, or in the body shop, so that's another problem. But, that's something, that's just life. Three cars, sounds like a lot and I know the number sounds high, but when you factor in, those cars come with cages, lights, radios and computers, that adds thousands of dollars to the cost of the car. And to equip the car, that's, that's the number.[1670.24] Been dealing with the, some of the building repairs and issues with the building, building believe, it looks good from the outside, but it's thirty years old. Two big issues looming for me are the roof and the HVAC system. The HVAC system is leaking, it's not always working, we're constantly calling a plumber in to tinker with it. Started a conversation with Andrew, you know, which one should we look at first? It doesn't seem to me to make any sense to paint walls and ceiling tiles when the HVAC is leaking and not working. We're operating a lot of the downstairs space, so that's, there's some heaters involved with that HVAC number, so the molding heaters, there's five or six in the throughout the building, those are also part of that quote. Again, I don't know what the exact number is because it's a prevailing wage, and it may involve bringing in an engineer. It's not a small project, the HVAC system is probably not something we'd start now, or something, obviously, when the weather's a little better for us. Those are my big issues, the cars and the HVAC.
So the HVAC is part of motion two, which is the two hundred thousand, right? That number is from a quote, is?
All part quote, but they got to factor in this thing specific to municipal bids, and you could probably, you know, contractually, they've got a prevailing wage and things like that, so I tried to get a number like as a placeholder to look at it, and I figured you folks would be, I know there's a lot of needs throughout town, so I'm just throwing that out there, I can't, I can't have everything, I realize that. Two big looming things, again, the HVAC and heating system and my roof. We did some repairs to the roof about ten years ago, so it's not currently leaking, but, you know, we got, somebody called me, this estimate for the roof, and they said, hey, it's coming up, you know, I'm not an expert on buildings, YouTube, it's this old house and homework, that's where I get most of my building, so I have others look at it and figure out what they think needs to be done.
We gave him a choice between two projects, he picked his HVAC system.
Okay. The roof, the roof isn't coming down?
No, sir, but I can't predict what it'll look like after the winter, right now.
Did you have a number associated with that, or do we have it?
It's around the same.
I thought it was about two hundred thousand.
Yeah, you would think it's a, you know.
So we kind of left it a little ambiguous on here, so that way if something didn't happen before the HVAC came up, we could move forward with the roof without being.
So this is to raise two hundred thousand dollars to pay for improvements of the police station? Could be HVAC, could be roof, depending on what happened.
The other thing I think the town might want to consider in the future is probably having somebody like overlooking all the buildings, because I don't know, I know what mine needs are, but I certainly don't know that maybe sewer has a more pressing need, or fire department has a more pressing need, but maybe some like a building maintenance commission or something that can look at overall what needs to be done, what things should be tackled, and certainly, to me, it makes no sense for me to be painting and replacing tiles while I got a leaking HVAC system, so there's got to be some type of a maintenance plan in place, how to do those projects, where we're not throwing money away.
Anthony, don't we have a municipal building?
Yeah, we have the, the municipal buildings advisory committee that does, you know, typically vet a lot of the projects that come forward to it, but I think that having, you know, ultimately in the long term, having a facilities person that oversees the operations of all of them is a good way to go, because I think really that day-to-day oversight of what's going on is following far more on the department heads, who might not be specialized in it.
All right, so sticking with motion two.
As far as the, the police cruisers, I mean, for two hundred thousand dollars for people at home, that's, and you're, you're, this is a revenue.
Well, one thing.
From, from, all the details.
One thing Steve is right, some of the revenue that's generated from the use of it on the car, that comes back to the town. So I don't see that, it doesn't come back to me to buy a car, that goes back to the town, so that's a cost of doing business. We, we charge those that are looking for work, the details, there's a premium that they pay to get a car, and that money goes back to the town.
Any idea what this is?
I believe it's five percent, five up to one. There's a fee.
And are we buying them, or are we leasing them?
Buy.
Okay, Finance Committee, I'll entertain, let's do motion two first. I'll entertain a motion to accept motion two as presented.
Salute.
Motion, do I have a second? Second, any discussion? All those in favor say yes.
Yes.
Opposed say no. It is approved by the Finance Committee.
Same on our side, please.
I move to approve the motion two as presented.
I have a second.
I second that with a brief discussion.
Discussion?
Steve. I would just, so we're looking at, we're looking at spending two hundred thousand dollars on the police station, a hundred thousand dollars on the fire station, and.
Well, for now.
For now, for now, to put repairs on, but just for the people at home, that's three hundred thousand dollars plus, plus, what was the, plus.
And that's this year.
Yeah, correct, exactly, yeah.
That's, that's this year.
One, one.
Plus the possibility of tearing down Station Two and doing something else there, that's probably six or seven hundred thousand dollars, and for the people at home, a new fire station would have cost us, that would have been probably the annual fee for that.
Very well said. All right, any further discussion? Here we go, all those in favor?
I.
Oppose, that's unanimous, all right, we're good on motion two, going down to motion four, which is for the cruisers.
From the Finance Committee, I'll entertain a motion that we accept motion four as presented.
Salute.
Motion and second, any discussion? Bring none, all those in favor say yes.
Yes.
Opposed say no. It is unanimous, Finance Committee approves.
I have a second.
Uh, yeah, I move to approve the motion.
Oh, second.
Any further discussion?
Is, is, I guess for the people at home in this, because he's, he's the new hit of your town, of your, of your department now, is Dozer going to get a ride in one of these new cruisers?
Um, no, that was a stipulation.
It'd make it easier to sell.
I said, you're not driving a new car.
Did you say that to Dozer or Gaylord? That's not a Dozer ticket.
So we do have some grant money down the road, so I mean, I may replace his car with somewhat something newer, but not a brand new car.
Yeah.
It's not feasible, it's not, you know, patrol takes priority.
I'm still more comfortable with Dozer driving. So, all those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose, that is unanimous, motion four is set. Thanks, Chief, you're good to go.
Thank you.
Talking motion three, Andrew, is that Jeff?
Yeah.
Jeff, come on.
Can I just clarify that these items, because the word raise was used, that this is not raising through new taxation, this is allocated from free cash, that's already in the budget.
Correct.
So I just wanted to offer that, because the word raise was used in it.
Very well done.
Thank you.
Yeah, for those who couldn't hear, Tom Smith made a good point, that these items that we're talking around right now, for, for these motions, they're, they're moving from free cash, so we're not looking to raise anything newer, it's literally moving from one bucket to another, and again, we can talk more about free cash at the, at the symposium.
Let me give a brief explanation of what free cash is.
You got it there.
Okay. We're audited at the end of our fiscal year by the state, and they give us a number, they go through all of our accounts, and they check off what we should pay and what we have paid, and then they give us a certified free cash number, and that's the amount of money left over from last year's tax revenues that we're allowed to spend this year on capital expenditures. And that number this year was one point six two.
One point six nine seven.
One point six nine seven, so we had a million, six hundred and ninety-seven thousand dollars that we could allocate this year. In all of these motions that we're doing, we're spending about a hundred, about a million, four hundred and ten thousand, all right, leaving us about two hundred thousand that we can put in somewhere else in stabilization. So that's what free cash is, every year we get this and we spend it, our town has been doing it, we do operating at town meeting, and we do special expenditures at, at special town meeting, so that's, as he was saying, that's where this money's coming from.
And it may seem like a lot, but that's kind of consistent with what we've been doing. In fact, having free cash is actually healthy, because you don't want to be caught to say, well, wait a minute, you didn't raise enough money. So that's, yeah. Excellent, so we, thank you, Mr. Camos.
With the exception of that one borrowing line item, that we are borrowing money for the tanker truck, that's.
Yes.
That's not.
Yeah, the tanker truck's not coming out.
Correct.
Good point, thank you.
Because that was Article Six.
Six.
Yeah, so this, this specific article is, I believe, all free cash. So, Jeff, you're up.
All right, so basically, every year I get an article from the town to do technology improvements, and I was pretty confident with the number that we had discussed earlier, but I did raise it a little bit this year, because after not touching, like we've heard the two chiefs' buildings, and delving in there, there's quite a bit to fix. I'm not asking for a lot, because I do have some funds on hand, and Andrew's also been helping me acquire some funds from other avenues, along with the state for grants to upgrade the library and whatnot, but what I'm looking, why I'm asking for a little bit more this year, and it's just to cover replacement, basically cameras for the PD. There's two camera systems in town, there's the whole town, and then there's PD, and those cameras are from when it was built.
There ain't a lot of.
Yeah, they're, they're really old, so we want to replace the older ones, integrate them with the town system, to have a better backup, a better storage unit, a better archival, and a better retrieval for when they need video for court appearances, evidence, anything like that. So that includes booking room, interview room, cameras around the building, all the cells, all the ones, all the cameras in the hallways, between cells, so that everything's covered, because some of them are very antiquated, where blurry, not, not very, not very sharp at all. That's one of the things. Obviously, we're also doing some, with cameras, we have door stations, and PD and Fire, they're going, and so you can see who's at the door, no matter where you are in the building, you can pull up and see who's at the front door, while if they need to get buzzed in, and have access controls with FOBS, or have dispatch let them in, and also there's an ability if someone's, there's an emergency, they can dial nine-one-one right from there, and access services if needed.
Sounds like the bulk of this is all equipment.
Yeah.
Versus subscriptions or new software or?
Nope, that's, that's not till twenty twenty-four. That's when Windows eleven's going to come out, and you're going to have to get new service software and fix the desktops, and to be honest, Chief's talked about his new cruisers, he's getting two or three, and you might add one or two that might be able to transition into the next version of Windows, otherwise they're all, I've been running tests on them. I didn't tell you that yet, by the way, but they don't work. And as far as what the chief was saying about roof leak, I didn't know it was leaking, and all of the state's equipment and the town's equipment is in the basement, so if that gets wet, we're in trouble.
Not currently.
Okay, well, if it does.
It's not currently raining.
So I do have, I do have funds on here, and Andrew has been helping me allocate funds from different sources, that's why I didn't ask for that big of an increase, but just a little bit to cover. Those, those cell cameras especially are very expensive, they're stainless steel and durable, and we're going to get some more disk space to incorporate the old into the new.
I think the more we be proactive on these things, which is much better off on every possible level, but, Mr. Camos, I'll defer to you.
Yeah, from the Finance Committee, I'll entertain a motion, we approve motion three. Salute. I have a motion, and I have a second, no discussion, all those in favor say yes.
Yes.
Opposed say no. It is a vote, approved by Chief Knopf.
Thank you, same on our side, please.
I would make a motion to appropriate a hundred thousand dollars for technology.
A second.
Any other discussion? Here we go, all those in favor?
Aye.
All right, opposed, that is unanimous, Jeff, thank you, well done.
Thank you.
Going down to five, I don't see Jerry around, but Andrew, can you pick?
Yeah, no problem. Yeah, so both of these articles, Article Five, Article Six, these are ones that have been kind of like well planned out from the Highway Department. According to Jerry, the dump truck is definitely the higher of the two needs, but the pickup truck is also, you know, getting up, or is also a regular expenditure, so those, those are right in line with where we were in our long-term capital plan.
All right, so that's, that's a hundred and eighty thousand dollars for a dump truck, and we'll do one at a time, we'll do that one first. And Phil, you brought up a good point, let everybody know, this comes from free cash, so this is another use of our free cash, we're certain of our cash. All right, from the Finance Committee, I'll entertain a motion, we accept motion five as presented.
Salute.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, any discussion? All those in favor say yes.
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 All those in favor say yes?
Hank, I have a question.
Yes.
So, might be out of turn, but just looking ahead at motion seven, which is also a dump truck, there's a pretty significant cost between the two, I'm not sure if anybody could maybe comment on that?
Yeah, no problem, so it's technically not a dump truck, it's an F three fifty, so the, so the pickup truck for DPW, or that's under Highway, is an F two fifty, the motion seven for cemetery is an F three fifty, just kind of like a little bit, little bit more. He had classified his capital plan as a dump truck, so.
Okay, so that one he spent that as.
Yes.
Yeah, okay, thank you, appreciate it.
I looked at the numbers too, and said, yeah, like.
Yeah, ten, ten-wheel dump truck for highways, different than the, you know, grass and clippings dump truck for cemetery.
No truck, sorry.
You're not the only one.
So I'm calling for, for approval of Article Five. I have, I have one yes, do I have two more yeses?
Yes.
Finance Committee approves Article, motion five.
Steve Abashman?
I move to approve motion five as well.
Steve?
Second.
Any discussion? Here we go, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, that's unanimous. All right, now we're doing number six.
Motion six, yes. To the Finance Committee, I'll entertain a motion to approve motion six as presented.
Salute.
I have a motion, and I have a second, any discussion? All those in favor say yes.
Yes.
Opposed say no. Approved by the Finance Committee.
Same on our side, please. There's motion six.
Okay, I move to approve motion six.
I'd second that for discussion.
Discussion, please, Steve.
Quick, quick discussion though, that doesn't, so this, this four-by-four truck, did this, will this have a plow on it, did they like plow the fire station with this or something, or is this just a utility truck they drive around?
I believe it's just a utility truck.
Yeah.
I think he's using the plow.
Yeah, it's probably already on the plow.
If they have two fifty with a plow, like what Jerry and his, the work in form drives now.
Thanks, Peter.
I believe.
Any other discussion?
Here we go, all those in favor?
I want to see him find a truck like that for fifty thousand.
I was going to say, I'll be cut off.
This year, he'll be delivered in twenty twenty-four, the way.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, that is unanimous, so we're done with six, moving down to seven for the cemetery. Andrew?
Same thing, generally in line with that four-by-four pickup, stepping up to a three fifty instead of two fifty, and right now, Jim had actually come before you guys before noting the need for this truck, that it basically is not running right now, he's kind of borrowing a truck from Highway to get him through, and, you know, is kind of now looking forward to the year and a half lead time that he's anticipating to get a green pickup truck, but yeah, this is definitely recommended and supported.
Yeah, not to be macabre, I was down there with Jim buying, buying plots, and he, and he showed me the truck, and I can't even believe that we were using that for as long as we were, which is, I was like, okay.
All right, to the Finance Committee, I'll entertain a motion that we approve motion seven as presented. Salute, motion and a second, any discussion? All those in favor say yes.
Yes.
Opposed say no. It's unanimous, Finance Committee approves.
Steven Bosh, please.
I move to approve motion seven as it is.
Steve?
I second.
Any discussion? Here we go, all those, all those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That's unanimous. Going down to number eight, I don't see anybody from ComCom, so Andrew, can you?
Yeah, so Little Nugget Dam improvements, this is something that's also been on the capital improvement radar for a few years now, something that was dinged from the Office of Dam Safety, was repairs that are needed to the inlet to the Little Nugget Dam, essentially, I think that the control to the, to the dam itself, that kind of gates the, the flow out needs to be repaired, right now it's kind of, it's locked in, so this was brought up, I think, about two to three years ago, and just been kind of pushed down the needs list, so we brought it up this year for consideration.
Hey, just a quick question, Andrew, it's more optics and maybe a little politics, I know that the last town meeting, the Conservation Commission was surprised around one of the articles, because they didn't know that they were submitting it, is this coming from the commission, or is this coming from the department, and is the commission aware of it?
I will confirm the commission is aware of it, it came to finance from the department.
Okay, cool, yeah.
Yeah, I think it's, it's been on the capital plan for, I think, three, at least three years. I think we brought it up last year to get put on, but we pulled it with COVID, so.
Okay, just as a personal favor, if we can let ComCom.
So it might have been before the new agents been.
Gotcha, cool. Be on that, Mr. Camos.
Finance Committee, I want to entertain a motion that we approve motion eight as presented. So move. A motion and a second. All those in favor say yes?
Yes.
No, opposed, say no. As a motion, finance committee approves.
Abashman, Steve?
Uh, I move to approve motion eight.
Steve?
I would second that for a quick discussion. Now that, is this um eventually paid back by the, by the abutters on the Little Nugget? Wait, this is ours. This is incredibly, I don't, I have to answer this question.
No, that's a very good question, though. Any further discussion?
Oh, a second.
No, I have a second. Okay, all right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That is unanimous. And last, no, actually, we, we already did motion nine. So we are officially done with Article two. I'm sorry, Article five, which was the free cash items. Uh, we did Article six from Chief Knopf. That was the borrowing article. We are down to Article seven, sponsored by the Board of Health. This one's kind of interesting. Andrew, you can walk us through this one.
Yeah, so this is a proposal to, or a two-million-dollar bond item to cap the old town landfill on Flint Road. So there are two landfills that are there a number of years ago. The town was required to cap the newer of the two landfills. DEP's kind of been monitoring this one over time, has been kind of lightly prodding the town to, to eventually cap it. I know prior administrations have been working out different ways of trying to do this. But we've been kind of kicking can down the road. So there's been the development of a few new houses in that area. And because it's within a certain proximity of the old landfill there, of any landfill that's ours, we're required to test their water. Well, there was a recent hit of one of the chemicals that were, that they're on the lookout for, the one-four dioxide. And by getting that hit at one of these, and that was confirmed through multiple tests. So now that that has sparked, that we've regained the attention of the DEP. We now have to go up five hundred feet from that testing location, go out and do additional testing. But now they're basically going to start forcing the town's hand and say that we must allocate some funds to perform this cap. So this is essentially to meet the DEP's man, you know, upcoming mandate that the town do something about capping this lake.
So it's a combination health issue for the neighbors as well as a regulatory inevitability that will only cost more money later.
Correct.
So, yeah.
Unfortunately, this is, this doesn't alleviate the problem. It's just kind of phase one. The ultimate alleviation of the problem would be to get, you know, public water down there. They're at least saying that this has been something the town has not acted on, that the DEP's been requiring for a while. You have to at least skirt this.
I think it's a good example of something that we don't want to kick down the road like we, but the town has in the past for like other items, which add up to costing us a lot more money. So I think doing it now, I think, I, I think we're better off.
I, I just wonder, and Andrew, you probably know this, with all this infrastructure money and all this, does this fall into that? Federal money that's out there to grab for grants and things like that? Any of, this sounds like something that might have been on the one. Remember the one, not, not the one that's going through Congress now, but before?
Maybe the CARES Act or the ARBA.
We, didn't I, we were, we were appropriated potential four million dollars over three years. If, if we, I'm going back a couple of months and reading that email. If we proved it was, it fell within certain categories, does this fall in that category?
So it doesn't technically, and it's kind of a stretch if you were to say that, because it's not necessarily a thing that brings economic development. It doesn't improve our, the one way you could get this to fit was if we were using that money to run the water line to go down there, to, to alleviate that, that water issue. But I think you're talking about a lot more than four million dollars to do that type of work. So, you know, it's something that we may be able to use some of that ARBA money to look at the engineering phase for and try to make some upcoming plans. Maybe work toward grants to, to go in that direction. But as far as doing the cap itself, I don't think that we could fit it within one of the buckets of the ARBA money. But, you know, we could look at, you know, some of the guidance to see if that might be a.
Yeah, but, but if we don't use that four million dollars, if we don't find a suitable within the guidelines of reason to use it, we lose it.
Right. That's, that's attached. My initial recommendations are attached to the background, so.
Hey, I'm sorry. Drew, it looks like we have a question up there that we're going to get to in a few minutes, but I'm not sure who's running the computer. Can you?
Uh, Hank.
Oh, sorry, my bad. We'll get, Chris, I got you. We'll talk about it in a few minutes. Yeah, it, it's around the order of the articles that I think we can table for now, but have a discussion in, in a few minutes.
All right, so right now, we're going to just approve Article seven or work on Article seven.
Article seven, please, yeah.
Okay. So my, my question before I enter the motion, just so everybody knows, this is going to be borrowed money. This, where the town's going to go out, they're going to get a twenty or a thirty-year bond. And what we have to incorporate in our operating budget is the annual interest and principal payments. So that's how that affects. All right, to the finance committee, I'll entertain a motion that we approve Article seven as presented. So move. I have a motion. Do I have a second? I have a second. Any discussion? All those in favor say yes?
Yes.
No, opposed, say no. The finance committee approves Article seven.
And to piggyback upon what Hank said, as a reminder, anything that's a borrowing article is a two-thirds majority. It's not simple. So that's something else to think about for town meeting voters. That being said, Art, our board, please.
Um, I move to approve motion.
Okay, Steve?
I, I would, I'd second that motion. But for a little bit of discussion, as long as we're absolutely one-hundred percent sure that any of that federal money can be used for this or the, or the plan further ahead. I know you guys are looking into it. You don't know.
I, I would recommend, you know, approving the full amount, but if it's deemed that that money could be used for cap, then that would just be author, authorized but unused debt. As you'll see further, you know, we typically borrow or authorized to borrow more than what is anticipated to be used and then rescind whatever is not issued.
Okay, so if those don't, we, we're, we're looking to borrow two million within the levy limit, as Hank said. However, if we get grants or any type of funding either way, we just wouldn't borrow the entire two million, so. All right, any further discussion? Here we go. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That's unanimous. Article seven done. We are moving on to, oh, stabilization funds.
Article eight is moving money into, either raising or appropriating money to move into the stabilization fund. And right now, in front of us, we have motion one, which would move, would raise seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars to put into our, our standard stabilization fund. It would raise another two hundred and fifty thousand dollars to be put into a capital stabilization fund. That's the one we talked about earlier for buying trucks and fixing buildings. And then four hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars to fund the sewer stabilization fund. That's, we're raising. That's from your retained earnings into, okay. So I got it right. All right, any questions of that? If they're being done from the finance committee, I'll entertain a motion that we approve Article eight as presented. So move.
Second.
Second. I have a motion, a second. Any discussion? All those in favor to say yes?
Yes.
No, opposed, say no. It's approved by the finance committee.
Same thing, Abashman, Steve?
Um, I move to approve Article eight as presented.
I second that. Any discussion?
I have a question.
Pete, you're up.
Typically, when we do this, it's transferred from free cash to a bump off to stabilization now. I think we're coming out of our FY22 budget to fund this transfer?
Yes.
So there's excess capacity in our FY22 budget to fund a million dollars?
Yes.
The four seventy-five, oh, I'm sorry. Were you talking, just, I'm sorry, Pete. I just want to make sure that, that I just have a question. You're talking around the seven fifty and the two fifty, correct? Okay, cool, yeah, yes. Exactly.
Actually, the proper wording might should probably could be have raised to appropriate.
No, we haven't. No, the town hasn't, did not budget this at annual. So this is an, essentially an amendment to the budget that was approved at the annual town meeting.
So additional revenue is coming from just? We didn't anticipate it or we didn't need it for the FY22 budget?
It's unanticipated due revenue.
Or it said, a very nice way, we brought in more than we thought we, that we wouldn't.
So if we use it now, it would show up in next year as free cash at our FY23.
I think that's how. Potentially, unless, unless, unless more of it went to stabilization.
We'd have to do something in order to set our tax rate. It has to go somewhere.
Yeah.
In order to set the tax rate, because the new growth is so high. So it's above and beyond, but we, we only budgeted three fifty and it's above and beyond that. So it has to go somewhere in order for us to set our tax rate.
Oh, all of us policy wonks. We love this stuff. All right, any other discussion? All right, here we go. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That is unanimous. We are done with Article eight. Oh, Article nine's nice and easy for once. Mr. Kamasi? Oh, actually, I take that, I take that back. That's actually ours.
Article nine, that's yours.
Figures. Andrew, talk to us.
We had borrowed, how much was the?
So we borrowed, I think, seven hundred and, I want to say, was it seven hundred and twenty thousand that we authorized at town meeting? Two thousand, maybe seventeen timeframe?
Eight seventeen, eighteen.
Yeah, it was a while ago. So basically, when we went out to borrow, it only cost us like six hundred and forty with all the interest payments and all that. We, the seven two thousand is what's above and beyond the borrowing costs we did, needed to fix the dam. So just rescinding the difference of what we authorized to borrow.
This is a similar discussion we just had around that two million, that we found other ways. You would see a similar article to this in years to come. So basically.
It's like what we just did with the public safety building.
Exactly.
And, and May.
Yep, so we didn't need to borrow like full amounts. So we're basically saying, hey, we're not going to use this money for, for, for anything else. They need to do that via town meeting vote. Mr. Kamasi?
From the finance committee, I'll entertain a motion to accept Article nine as presented. So move. I have a motion. Do I have a second? I have a second. Any discussion? All those in favor to say yes?
Yes.
No, opposed, say no.
Thank you, Stephen Abashman. Yeah, I, I'd make a motion we accept, we accept Article nine. Any discussion?
I second.
Any discussion? This is an easy one, right?
They're sending.
Here we go. All those in favor? Opposed? I want to take that as unanimous. Article ten is kind of interesting. So Andrew, give us the elevator speech, Mr. Kamasi.
Yeah, so we've been in contract negotiations with the police union. Part of the negotiation and still pending ratification is that the union would support the police union positions coming out of civil, coming out of civil service moving forward. Existing civil service members would retain their rights for basically a certain period, or for going forward unless they were to leave service within the ARBA. We typically, when you do this, the town can either impact bargain before or after the town meeting vote. We've already engaged them prior to, so a lot of our negotiations are kind of pending the town meeting's approval on it. So I think that we, both the union and the town will feel that coming out of civil service is good for our future recruitment of new officers and just being able to have more local control in that process.
Yeah, the only thing to add is that this isn't a negotiation tactic. This is a favorable negotiation discussion with the union about this. So I just want to make sure that people don't think that we're trying to pull a fast one. Literally, we've been negotiating with, with the police unit about this and they're okay with it. So any questions from FinCom? I know it's ours, but I don't know if you guys have any questions.
I, I would, maybe Dan can answer this really quick, but they're, they're okay with it as a, as a vast majority or?
They proposed a negotiation. I believe they still have to ratify it for the general, because they have a proposal, so I assume their membership supported that.
I think a town meeting, this one, might take a little explanation.
Agreed. Any other discussion from our side? Here we go. I would like to entertain a motion.
I would make a motion to accept.
I, I second.
Any further discussion? As written. Here we go. All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, opposed? That is unanimous. Looking forward to working with the police union on that. Now our favorite, Article eleven. Let's talk TIPS. Andrew?
All right, so this is the taxicap finance agreement that has been negotiated between the town and Amazon. On the next page, you'll see a block just trying to kind of outlines for the general terms of what the tip is and, you know, what it generally means for the town. The general premise of the tip is that it provides some relief from the real estate taxation portion of it and then increases that the total amount that they invest in the property over a period of time as negotiated. So it starts, you know, as it was negotiated, it starts at a fifty-five percent exemption in year one and then slowly depreciates down to ten percent in the last year, which is year ten. What's beneficial about this from the town's perspective is that when, you know, the, the Amazon project is a very, it will bring a significant amount of revenue growth from both the real estate percentage, or real estate taxation and personal property. Now, real estate will slowly increase over time, even without any sort of taxing increment, but personal property slowly depreciates. So if, you know, year one comes in and there is over a hundred million dollars of personal property, or even two hundred and twelve million dollars in real estate, that real estate amount will continue to increase over time. However, the personal property will depreciate over time. So that solely creates, you know, and assuming that you budget for that full amount of new tax revenue, you start creating a, you know, gap in that amount of, you know, need based off just that personal property alone. What we've done is try to structure a tax agreement that essentially holds the depreciation of the personal property in line with the increase of real estate. So that we see a nice jump in revenue year one and that slowly continues to increase over the ten-year term until the end of the TIP and then, and then continues to increase over time. So I think that in general, that this works well because it does provide that, that increase, or it provides well for the town because we do get this increase, but then helps Amazon, you know, kind of help fund their project budget by kind of giving them an anticipated, I guess, hard, or even revenue, or even taxation over a ten-year term. And in exchange of that, we did negotiate a separate community partnership agreement that's contingent upon the TIP that essentially invests about nine million dollars back into the town in dedicated funds that either they're going to be required to do by Mass DOT or that fits within their company's community, you know, their, their policies.
Community outreach.
Yeah, their, their community outreach policies and so.
I just want to thank Andrew, the negotiating team and everyone on like town hall staff. I think this is actually a very fair deal to, to, to everyone. And I just want to, you know, again, say thank you. I mean, obviously, it's, it's up to town meeting voters. But I, I think, like I said, you all worked very hard with, with everyone. So I know we've talked about it ad nauseam. What I'd like to do is turn it over to FinCom first, anyone in the audience, and then anyone at home, if you have questions. Because I know there's been some social media chatter that people don't know what this is, so. Hank, let me start.
Yeah, the, the questions I've, I've heard, right, when they hit the, the TIP is what did we get? That's always everybody's. And they think Amazon has empty, bottomless pockets. But is this what they are giving us, the firefighting equipment and the STEM funding, has that been publicized enough, or do you believe?
I mean, we could always publicize it more. You know, they were, it's difficult. You know, we do have a dedicated place on the town website, right smack in the middle, that has all of that. But, you know, lots as a town have to do, do have to walk that fine line of, you know, not pushing for a affirmative or negative vote one way or another. So not just saying you must vote yes to get all this, it's just saying we've negotiated a, you know, a TIP and community partnership agreement that are in conjunction with one another, and here's what you would get and kind of hope that people would see that the benefit of the community partnership does justify the ability of giving them some tax relief for, for a period of time.
And this, this proposed agreement is only about two weeks old, so we really haven't had a chance to really get it out there. There was a lot of, and I, I want to give Andrew credit for this too. There was a lot of, it wasn't one meeting where they came. There was five or six meetings and there was a lot of, Andrew did a great job looking at other sites and other towns and calling them and saying, hey, what did they give you? How did this work out? We don't want to leave any money on the table. And so, yeah, between him and Kathleen, I was, I was super impressed with the job. You really got us off heading on the right spot.
All right, heading back to your team?
I have a question. At what point do we receive the community funds?
So that's going to be outlined within the final partnership that we're, we're still trying to kind of, our biggest, or biggest hurdle, I was saying hurdle, but. The first thing that we had to take care of was the TIP because we do have, from a legal perspective, have certain deadlines that we have to meet to get that filed. Our legal counsel's reviewing that right now, but I think a lot of it is going to be contingent upon the issuance of a building permit. So kind of that, it'll either, you know, it'll probably be divided up into separate chunks and we still kind of have to figure out what comes first and what comes second. But, you know, portions of it will be at the issuance of a building permit and others, others will be at the issuance of a certificate of occupancy.
Yeah, but even like the STEM program in our schools, which I'm super excited about. I think that was great. So it's one point five million dollars over ten years, but it's a hundred, a hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year. So we'd probably get a hundred and fifty thousand a permit and then, yeah, through that.
Where, where it says that they have to work with Mass DOT for that five point three, okay? They're going to work directly with their engineers and how their driveways are going to work and all that. So that doesn't pass through the town per se. But they've committed to spending that much to improve that section of Route twenty.
Correct.
And I'm assuming that number was probably derived from Mass DOT. They, they're, they're, they're pretty far down the line with Mass DOT, yeah, from what I understand.
Yeah, it's both twenty and one sixty-nine, and we've also asked nicely to see, to see if Mass DOT will expand out to look, take a look at any secondary or tertiary words. I think we're still waiting to hear back on that, or?
I think that they've kind of come back to that. I love to, I love to.
Yeah, I'm not sure what the final answer was, so.
But I did look and I know that there were concerns about the bridge on Route twenty. Did a little digging with Mass DOT and right now it is under design phase for replacement. So that is under Mass DOT's scope. I tried to kind of reach out to some people to figure out kind of how, if they even have a tentative timeline. So that way it's not all hitting at once, but I'm still waiting for somebody to get back to me.
Regardless of Amazon or somebody on the reader.
It is, yeah. Yeah, apparently back in May, or back in May is when it officially went into design phase. It's with a consultant right now.
That's great, because that is definitely a bottleneck.
Absolutely.
Oh, yeah, it is.
Hank, still your show?
Yeah, so you.
Yeah, so you, that's an interesting question. So you said the 1.5 million for STEM is over 10 years.
Over 10 years.
Are any of these others on a timeline like that?
No, I believe all of them are right up front.
Right up front, the recreational and all the rest of it.
Yes.
Yeah, I think Andrew's point, we have to figure out that final agreement. But I believe the town's position and assumption is that we're going to get everything as close as possible to up front. Now, again, I know, for those who know about GAP and like FASB, et cetera, there are certain financial accounting benefits, so some of it might be tweaked, but for intents and purposes, I believe, Andrew, I think it's fair to say that our position is that we like everything as much as possible up front.
I'm just going to add to it that Alex from the Blue Water Group, she has done a lot of work on the social media. There's several presentation, PowerPoint and the like, really pinpointing to the specific spendings and, you know, all of the settling agreements. So she really did a good job and this is all described. We're trying to share it as much as we can.
Chief, do you already have, oh, you left. I was wondering if you already had that $780,000 spent. Or we could use it for the fire truck that we...
Well, really, it's so...
Nice trial. That's the next one.
One of the big investments, and it was on the capital plan, we used it as kind of a low hanging fruit, was that, you know, three years from now, they'll be looking for a rescue truck to replace this that's currently 19 years old. And, you know, recognizing that the biggest, or the two biggest responses that they'll be going to are probably going to be car accidents from additional traffic and man versus machine accidents that may happen within the facility. So it made the most sense to pitch that to them and they agree.
Good, all right.
Any other questions for FinCom?
I've got one. So you answered it, I think. It sounds like we haven't done a TIP before in town.
We've done one in the past, a very small one, it was all based on job growth, but the company that it was issued to defaulted on it after three years.
Okay, so I'm just curious your thoughts if we're setting a precedent for future large commercial projects would expect this and is that maybe a good thing in terms of recruiting?
I think it is. It shows that the town is open to inviting new companies in, especially if they're going to invest heavily in the town. We know that there's other ones on the line. And I think a lot of it depends on what the budgets that they have and where their tax benefits are coming from. Because there are other ones that may see, or may generate more tax credits from the state and really just need a very small TIP from the town in order to make that happen. Generally, if they're qualified for state tax credits, the town's is just a small requirement. They might only need like a 5% to say, hey, look, we got the town support, so. But I think it's good to, at least, it's a good starting point to come in to say, it's great that you went into North Andover and got an 80% TIP in year one, Amazon, but came to Charlton, you got 55%, so. I think it's a, I think it's a good...
That's how I ruled out too.
I just wanted to add that.
But I think, wasn't, I wasn't in town then, but...
No, I just want to say just exactly the same what Andrew said, that the similar projects, the one in Andover and the one in Connecticut even, they still have a TIP. So that's the way of doing business per se for them. And I think what we did is just a welcome gesture. Like you said, for the businesses alike, absolutely.
Steve, do you want to elaborate on Windsor Locks, on what the TIP there, or do you want to share it?
Oh, I just, you know, it's all public information, but like the Windsor Locks, you know, just kind of like an overview of the other large projects. And here's the three other robotic sortation centers that Amazon has done in other communities that are under development that they negotiated with other town, in New England at least. And there's one in Johnson, Rhode Island, Windsor, Connecticut, and North Andover. All those are 3.7 million square foot facilities where this is 2.8. Windsor Locks, Connecticut, was a three-year TIP that is offering about $8.8 million exemption over that period with no community partnership. The Johnson, Rhode Island one is interesting because Rhode Island has very different tax structures and allows you to actually go and fix tax payments over a period of time. That's a 20-year pilot payment based off of both real estate and personal property. So it doesn't matter how much they invest in, if they go in and after five years decide to double the size of the building, they're not going to gain any additional tax revenue from that. That's all fixed for 20 years, no matter what they invest. And then the North Andover project, that was an 80% TIP, year one depreciating down to 50% after 10 years. And the value of community partnership between our two proposals were almost exact F18 of almost $10 million in community partnership. So I think that we really struck a good balance between all the projects.
I really hope that people at home watch this too.
Is helpful, so when you start to socialize this with the town, you know, if we can kind of build that story, that's amazing.
And in answer to, to really the former part of your question, that I am all ears when it comes to any company that will make a significant capital investment in town that will provide jobs, a higher revenue via taxes, et cetera. That doesn't necessarily mean that I'm going to approve the TIP to bring it forward, but I'm happy to have that conversation because I think every member who's ever ran for the board of selectmen at, well, really almost any office in town at one point in either, has beaten his or her fist and said, economic development. Well, this board has actually now gone that extra mile to say, we've actually negotiated economic development. It's up to the town to decide, but we've been charged to do X and we've done it. And now it's up to the town to decide. So any future companies that come forth, I'm happy to have the conversation. I may not reach an agreement with them, but I'm happy to have the conversation, so.
I wasn't in town then, but I do believe that Millennium had a TIP.
Pilot.
Oh, it was a pilot, yeah.
And that one actually required special legislation in order to go through because in general, they aren't allowed under state tax law, really. I think now that you wouldn't get the legislature to push one through.
Yeah, I agree with that, yeah.
And it's just not that, what we see here, it's everything after that. You know, all those people have to eat somewhere, all those people need gas somewhere, all these people need to, you know, maybe eventually move here closer, so, so much more than this. And I agree with you, it should be, we should talk about it more.
Anything else for FinCom?
I'll entertain a motion.
Actually, Hank, I'm sorry, before you do that, I'm sorry. Is there anything from the audience? Anybody, anybody at home? No, really?
I'm just sharing that, you know, they're planning to spend $300 million on this project, so obviously they have $300 million to spend on this project. And, you know, it is, there are people questioning why they need help to build a $300 million project by getting $11 million in tax relief over 10 years. So it's just a question that I'm sure we'll hear. And then I just want to encourage people that this, and thank you, Andrew, for the negotiation because it's nice to see there's an $11 million tax relief and a $10 million investment in the town that, you know, does ease the pain. But I want to also encourage folks at home that there's, this is a two-part approach that involves these two groups, the full town meeting for this particular conversation and the planning board for approvals of what the site actually includes and offers to the town. Because while there's lots of advantages that I think are clear on employment and funding, if we wind up spending all the money trying to make up for problems brought to the town from the site, then, you know, we've kind of undone the benefit for ourselves. So I think that the planning board's side of things is really important and people at home who might have opinions or thoughts or ideas or suggestions should be paying attention to that other side of the conversation as well.
All right, in response to the question that's been honestly asked by a lot of people of, you know, Amazon's one of the largest corporations on the planet, why they're looking for tax breaks, I don't negotiate $300 million deals at work, they're obviously much, much smaller, but I always have a Plan B. Now, they've never talked about a Plan B, but the reality is I can't believe that they don't have one. And the reason why towns give TIPS, it's all things being equal, where is the best return on investment from a town? And the largest piece of that is normally via taxes. So whereas the May town meeting vote enabled them to come for zoning, this is now trying to incent them to build, knowing that the longer-term value should outweigh the offset in taxes. Again, that's just objectively speaking, I have no idea if they have a Plan B. So what I said on my Facebook page, for example, is that if the town votes this down, it's anyone guess at what happens next. They could still build, or they could say, thank you very much, I'm going to an alternate town and all that traffic's still going to go through your town, but you're not going to get any of the benefits. So depends upon how people feel about the agreement, how people feel about rolling dice. So Andrew, it looks like we have, I'm sorry, is there anything else in the audience? Are there some questions at home?
Yeah, I think the first one was just relative to the structure of the...
Oh, yeah, yeah, we'll handle that one actually.
Yeah.
Jim?
Okay. Just a comment on, seems to be in support of the TIP.
Oh, cool, all right. Thanks, Jim, got you. All right, doesn't look like any other questions. Subtle disappointing, more people aren't on to ask, but that's a different conversation. So let me go back to you, Hank, on your side.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion from the finance committee to approve Article 11 as presented. So move. I have a motion.
Second.
All those in favor to say yes?
Yes.
Sorry, I never asked you if you wanted a second motion. I'll ask you then.
Kristen's doing great.
I kind of miss making motions, though. All right, our side, please.
I make a motion to approve Article 11.
Steve?
All right, I'll second that.
Any further discussion? Here we go, now, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, that is unanimous. Don't forget Article 11, folks. All right, we are now on to zoning. I'm assuming, I'm assuming that the planning board has either has looked at this or is about to look at this.
They have yet, I think they still have to look at it, so just table it for now.
All right, so we're going to table...
This is a citizens' petition.
Yeah, got you, got this one. So the question from Chris is, and I think it's a very valid one, Kamasi online, is that there was some discussion in last May around the order of the articles and, you know, were they really in the most advantageous position to make smart decisions? I'd argue this format or this order actually is okay because we're really talking around free cash, then borrowing, and then finishing up with, you know, the big Article 11 and then zoning. But if anyone wants to think around changing the order, Andrew, I think we can, right? I mean, yeah, so, I mean, basically, we're just sorting it out there that if anyone on FinCom, the board of selectmen, or the audience, would prefer that we move some of the article numbers around to, we are able to. But I'm actually okay with it as is.
No, I don't see, what I remember from last year is they wanted us to break down a lot of the capital expenditures because they didn't want to vote on the table.
I think there was a conversation around if the public safety building had been before something else that they were, that people may have been more amenable, et cetera, et cetera. But again, I think it's, I mean, I think it's a fair question that we should always look at on like a go-forward of, all right, are these in the best order to make it best? I'm not going to lie, I'm not putting Article 11 first because what will happen is everyone will show up, vote, and leave. Sorry. But that's honestly, that, I've seen it happen over and over again. So I would rather keep Article 11 at least as is, but again, it doesn't sound like...
I like the order.
No, yeah, I don't see any...
Thanks, Corey. And again, thank you to moderator Scott for showing up tonight, we appreciate it. All right, I think we're done, at least with that part, right? All right, Andrew, are we good on like anything else?
Yeah, I don't know if we want to take any action or bliz to another discussion, but just because we were talking around Article 11 capital, I just provided a copy of kind of a narrative discussion around the American Rescue Plan Act and kind of a first-phase approach of kind of some ideas as to how we could spend some of that $4 million that we're getting through the end, kind of in ways that would meet those aspects. I think I just gave you guys kind of a bullet to the list last time, but this kind of goes more in depth as to the programs being proposed and kind of how they fit within certain buckets.
I'm happy to hear the thoughts from FinCom, unless our board disagrees, I'd rather table till our, just our next meeting, which we can invite FinCom to as well when David and Patzy are able to attend. But that's just my thought, again, I defer to the board.
You went over the rest the other day.
Okay, yeah.
Four million or... Would you guys come up with any other questions?
You can spend it in four, complicated in four.
No, we're good.
Okay, we push that into the...
But no, but thank you for like referring, that's been a good one. All right, then we're good. Hank, I'm going to give you guys, being honest, to adjourn first.
I'll entertain a motion to adjourn, so. Motion and a second.
Yep.
No, 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 go ahead, I'm sorry. No, no.
Yeah.
I had a question.
All those in favor to say yes?
Yes.
Oppose say no? Under vote, we are adjourned.
Anything else that we want to talk on? We're good? All right, I'll entertain them.
No, no, we're adjourned.
Cool. Thank you, but a second?
A second.
Any discussion? Here we go, now, those in favor? Opposed, that's unanimous. Everyone, thanks for joining in, please let us know if you have questions, thanks to the audience. FinCom, thank you for everything you do, I appreciate it.
Look at the first bullet.